And we will work with the council as we go forward and, you know, to see what can be done. But again, as I said, if conditions warrant, we will work with you, work everyone, to see what can be done for the benefit.
Okay. I just want to leave that on the record as being a priority of the council. Thank you.
We have Councilmember Lewis followed by Nurse.
Thank you, Chair and Speaker. Good to see you. Director Jiha. All right, I have three quick questions, so I'm gonna just say all of them so I don't lose too much time, and then we could go over them. So in January, the administration unveiled Women Forward, an action plan that includes a $43 million investment aimed at making New York City a national leader to become the most woman-forward city in the country, with the portion of investments for Women Forward NYC supported through city dollars to dismantle barriers in sexual, reproductive, and chronic health care, along with reducing domestic violence. How is the PEG affecting Women Forward? Also, second question, Women Forward is a cross-section partnership collaboration on health, tech, and business, particularly for DOHMH. How does the hiring freeze reduction in DOHMH from 11.6 million in FY24 to 5.2 million in FY25 impact the efficacy to sustain the mayor's commitment to women, sorry, to gender equity? My last question is regarding asylum seekers. As reduction in asylum seekers' population continues to grow in our city, we have a great need for legal services to provide these services, to enable many asylum seekers to separate themselves from the city's shelter system, reducing their cost to the city. I wanted to know, in the preliminary plan, how does your team expect to include any funding in fiscal '25 for asylum seekers' work authorization applications and other legal services? And why is it only in FY24 but not FY25? Thanks.
Yeah. In terms of the Women Forward initiatives, I believe we added $43 million in the budget. This is a citywide, as you know, it's a citywide initiative and involves many agencies. I'm gonna get back to two because I don't remember exactly, but for the last one, the asylum seeker, I believe we added $11 million in the preliminary budget to support the operations of the asylum seeker application help center, you know, that provide legal services for asylum seekers in our care. And I don't remember the...
So that the legal services is included with the authorization for...
Yes.
Okay, got it.
All legal services.
Now regarding Women Forward NYC, I wanted to ask, how is the PEG affecting Women Forward NYC?
Because...
It does not?
No.
On any of the agencies, including DOHMH, that now has a reduction?
That is different, but this is an initiative. The initiative is funded $43 million citywide. But so reduction in DOHMH or any other place have nothing to do with that particular initiative itself.
So it wouldn't impact the actual initiative?
Initiative.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nurse.
Am I last? Oh, thank God. Good afternoon. I'm just gonna ask, I am gonna ask some questions related to DOC, but also on behalf of Councilmember Brave for sanitation. The, we currently understand that 8.7 billion is what it will cost for the borough-based jails. What is, what is the, is there a new estimate for what the jails will cost?
Yes, I believe it's the, for like the two-thirds of the population right now, we're talking, which is currently in the Rikers, it's about $12 billion.
$12 billion? Okay, that's not what we've been hearing.
It says, it was $8 billion initially that was included, and we have to add another $4 billion.
And when do you plan to reflect that?
Oh, I'm sorry, 15, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, that's, I was gonna say, I don't think I've been hearing that.
15.5, yes.
Okay. Great, 15 billion. What's driving this increase?
Our cost of construction, you know, particularly steel, the price of steel has doubled.
Great. Okay, and related to the Board of Corrections PEG, I know Councilmember Brewer asked about this, but just to build on what she asked, in fiscal year 2023, lawsuits and monitors for the DOC cost the city of New York approximately $51 million. The city preliminary budget in FY24 included a request for $3 million for the Board of Corrections to bolster their monitoring staff for 27 new positions. The council negotiated $400,000 to be included in the adopted fiscal '24 budget to give some more money to DOC to investigate different issues that came up. But these two positions were removed as part of the pegs. So how are pegs savings calculated when reductions and restrictions end up costing the city more in the end?
These pegs were basically what we call underspending savings and as a result of lower than budgeted headcount, and we also took some savings on, from vacancies. Again, it comes right back to the scale of the challenge that we face, and at the time, we ask every agency to make a contribution.
Yeah, no, I understand. My understanding is that some of these positions, you know, these are investigators, these are research assistants, and the salaries being offered aren't really matching the talent and skill sets, what they would be paid outside and other, in the private sector, which is why it's quote-unquote maybe not being fully utilized. So hopefully that can be looked at and considered. Last year, DOC also cut contracts for some of the critical service providers on Rikers, and then we went, we found that, you know, DOC's attempts to do some of that programming just wasn't adequate enough to cover what those providers were doing. So now we're hearing, maybe informally, that DOC has invited these providers back, but without a new contract or compensation. So how do you, how is there an expectation to come do this critical work, I don't, I mean, not necessarily for free, but without additional compensation?
We are working with DOC, and as I said, we do an assessment of their needs, and I believe they've been working, they've been talking to those providers, and as we move forward closer to, you know, budget to exact, we will make a decision one way or another in terms of how we're gonna proceed with whether we're going to continue this program, and if there is a need to continue this program, we will make the appropriate adjustment at exact.
Okay. For sanitation, you know, I asked about this the last time I saw you. We were rolling out this curbside program. We had a year of Queens under the belt, now, then we rolled out Brooklyn. The numbers are pretty low across the two boroughs, and that kind of, you know, corresponds with cutting a lot of the contracts, a lot of those workers who were out doing outreach and spreading the word and helping people understand why it's important, those folks were laid off. And then DSNY got a lot of their outreach and communications budget cut, and I think at the last hearing we had last week, we were showing that the capture rate for organics is only at 4.3%. So basically, 95% of what could be collected in these two boroughs is just going straight into the trash, basically making this program, you know, even though what we're collecting is more than what's being collected around the country and other municipalities, we're still, for what we could be doing, very low. So are you planning at all, or are you considering restoring the cuts to some of those compost workers and the community organizations that were doing that critical outreach work?
I believe that the citywide program that we launched is more effective than those small programs, but I also believe that there is also...
No, those were, I understand the difference, but those folks were doing outreach parts of their work as well.
I also believe that there is an education piece that is missing.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe if we educate our folks, okay, they would take, you know, and many folks would participate, many more folks would participate in the program, and the program would become even more effective than having small, you know, community groups doing, you know, piecemeal here, piecemeal there. I think the citywide program is a lot more effective, is the approach that we should take, but I also believe that we also have to do a lot more in term of education so that more people could participate in the program.
Yeah, I mean, these, this participation and capture rate is so embarrassingly low, and it will make this program extremely expensive and create a justification for ending it. We don't want to do that, given how much we've put into it.
Yeah, we understand your concern.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Director, thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to negotiating with you as we head it deeper into budget season.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a break, and we're gonna hear from the city controller. All right, it's been a pleasure. We're good?
Sarge.
We're good? Okay. We're now gonna hear from the city controller. First, our committee counsel, Mike Toomey, is gonna swear everybody in.
Good afternoon. If you raise your right hands, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Controller Lander?
I do.
Deputy Controller Brindisi?
I do.
Deputy Controller Olson?
I do.
Thank you, you may begin.
All right, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Brennan, and members of the Finance Committee and the council. Thanks for having me here to talk about the city's preliminary budget, current economic conditions, transparency in the budget process, or more precisely, the lack of it, and an appropriate management response to our city's most pressing needs. I'm joined today by Executive Deputy Controller Francesco Brindisi and Deputy Controller for Budget Krista Olson. We released our report today on the preliminary budget and financial plan, and I understand the council now is doing electronic reports on those fancy new tablets, so in the future, we won't bring the reports, but today, we have the last printed copies. You guys have special editions. Despite the whiplash that we've experienced since the last budget was adopted in June, largely as a result of the mayor doing quite a few twists, turns, and two steps in the budget dance all by himself, and the associated lack of transparency around the city's finances, our report, whether in print or digitally, provides clarity about where we are and how those financial conditions have evolved. We also look at how critical circumstances have been impacted by Adams administration budget cuts, and at how the city could do better at managing spending on overtime claims, Carter cases, and emergency procurement. The city continues a gradual economic recovery. Jobs have rebounded and are now slightly above pre-pandemic levels, but growth has been largely concentrated in lower-wage health and social service sectors, and we project that growth will continue at a modest pace. As we spend a lot of our time discussing, rent remains critically high, not just burdening families, but burdening the city's future economic growth potential. We urgently need a deal in housing, on housing in Albany this year, to increase housing supply at all income levels with a focus on affordability, to better protect tenants from eviction with good cause protections, and especially to fund housing vouchers to help people escape homelessness into permanent housing. And we do also need and can afford more city investment in affordable housing. I'll come back to that at the end. Turning to the preliminary budget, I first want to identify two ways in which the Adams administration's approach to the process has really unhelpfully muddled budget conversation. First, last June, at the time of FY24 budget adoption, the administration presented the fiscal year '25 budget gap as being $5.1 billion. Then, just a couple of months later, in November, they projected that to increase to $7.1 billion, even after a round of peg savings, and then, just a few weeks later in January, presented it as a balanced budget, that $7 billion gap disappearing entirely. Now, some of those changes are due to increases in revenues, although I'll note that both the council's projections and our projections were closer to reality than the administration's, and some due to savings, largely reestimates of personnel as a result of vacancies. But a large part of that dramatic shift is due to the administration's wild swings in the estimate of costs for services for asylum seekers. At budget adoption last June, they projected the two-year cost for FY24 and '25 at $3.91 billion. Then, just two months later, in August, outside the normal budget schedule, and without any particular new information about border policy or migration shifts, they increased that projection to $6.91 billion, a whopping 177% increase, to a total of $10.82 billion. And then, more recently, they lowered it to $9 billion, and they've indicated that they plan to lower it further still in the executive budget. Meanwhile, the level of actual spending that has already occurred cannot be reconciled in the city's own financial management system with the numbers that they've given to you and to us, indicating that they've spent. So those dramatic variations make it difficult to accept these projections, their projections, with confidence, and given the timing of those announcements, it's quite reasonable for the council to believe that they were made for the purpose of establishing a rationale to order large pegs from city agencies, and then reverse the worst of those pegs in a show of magnanimity. And indeed, just after adjusting the forecasted gap up by $7 billion in August, the administration announced in September that peg savings would be in the three upcoming plans, each of them at 5%, combined with hiring freezes and other spending freezes, and then restored a small number of the initiatives that were cut in the November plan, canceled the third round of pegs in the executive budget, and pulled back hiring and spending freezes. These unnecessary twists and turns in the budget dance muddle the budget process and needlessly confuse the conversation. Further clouding that picture is the significant underbudgeting of many predictable expenses in the adopted budget, including rental assistance, special education Carter cases, and overtime. This pattern of underbudgeting expenses, despite knowing that these costs will be incurred, has become a habitual part of the city's budgeting, but it is not a good practice. A more accurate reflection of those expenditures would have added $3.97 billion in expenditures over the two years of the plan in the budget that you adopted last year, and roughly that pattern of about $4 billion of underbudgeted expenses is continued in the current preliminary budget. In addition, the mayor has not yet been clear on which federal, which programs funded with federal stimulus dollars will be continued or will be ended. So where does all this leave us? And this is the bottom line of this report. The controller's office projects that the city will end the current fiscal year in June with a small surplus of $214 million. However, where OMB projects a balanced budget for fiscal year '25, the controller's office projects a gap of $3.3 billion in fiscal year 2025 that will need to be closed, you know, by the time of budget adoption, as well as through that year. In the longer term, fiscal projections are challenging because that structural underbudgeting is compounded by two significant areas of long-term uncertainty: spending for asylum seekers, where long-term projections are in many ways just guesses, and the cost of reducing class sizes per state legislation, which is fully unbudgeted in the preliminary budget. If you leave those expenses out and go basically with projections for, you know, the near term and carry them forward, then my office projects out-year gaps of about $8.5 billion, or about 7.5% of total revenues for the out-years for fiscal years '26 through '28. If you include projections of asylum seeker costs and the class size mandate, then those restated gaps grow to $10.5 billion in fiscal year '26 and could reach $13.5 billion in fiscal year '28, nearly 12... nearly 12% of total revenues. How should we approach those gaps? So we released another report last week that you'll have to get online, The Bottom Lines, which outlines a better approach. Rather than cuts to essential services that New Yorkers rely on, we should work harder to cover those growing future-year gaps through stronger fiscal management. As I've advocated before, the city's fiscal health would be much better served by implementing efficiencies and cost savings in each budget modification, with incentives for agencies to achieve structural and long-term savings without cutting core services, rather than through erratic surprise announcements of PEG exercises that emphasize short-term cuts. It continues to be imperative that we reserve our rainy day funds for true recessionary times, despite current fiscal challenges. The New York City economy is projected to grow at a moderate pace, so I urge the council to adopt a target for the rainy day fund and rules for deposits and withdrawals that remove the fund from the back-and-forth budget dance, budget negotiation process. There are places, though, where long-term savings really can be achieved, and we've outlined several of them in this report and past reports. We've offered a plan to reduce Carter case settlements by providing better special education services in the public schools so people don't need to go outside them. We urge making agencies responsible for claims payments and settlement payouts, as we recommended in an analysis of collisions that we did earlier this year. Last year, the city paid out over $1.5 billion in settlements. But the agencies that are responsible for the harms that are being settled bear no responsibility on their budgets for those payments, so they don't have any incentive to reduce them. If you put the claims responsibility on the books of the agencies, then you'll get commissioners involved in saying, "How could we have fewer crashes? How could we cause less harm and have fewer payouts? We think you could save hundreds of millions of dollars." We've also repeatedly identified significant opportunities for savings through better management of emergency procurement. Last week, our analysis found that four separate city agencies had entered into four separate emergency contracts for asylum seeker staffing services, for the folks who staff the various asylum seeker facilities, but for many of the exact same services. But three of those contracts were issued without competitive bidding, and the result is wide cost variation. In one particularly egregious instance, Slisco, an emergency contractor procured by New York City Emergency Management, charged hourly rates that were 237% more than a similar contract procured by DHS. Looking at just one facility in Midtown, we found that hiring new city employees instead of going with the contract that was in place could have delivered as much as $50 million in savings. And we also, in addition to claims, Carter cases, and emergency procurement, identify uniformed overtime, especially on planned events, as another area that we persistently underbudget, but could achieve real savings on. And those reductions would be far better than many of the shortsighted cuts that are included in the preliminary budget. I'm not going to go through these in as much detail because you went through them in your questions with the budget director, but CUNY has faced a cumulative $95 million in annual cuts when all of the various rounds of out-of-administration pegs are taken into account, and it is having a real impact on their budget. Libraries still face the impact of earlier cuts and can't afford to stay open seven days a week. The administration's cuts to alternatives to incarceration and slow-walking the construction of the outposted therapeutic beds that are supposed to be coming online is similarly short-sighted. Those programs keep our community safe, and they save money in the long run. An ATI is much less than a comparable amount of time at Rikers, and to call that a reestimate when it reduces the number of people who can be served in the program is misleading. It is a cut. I also hope the council will continue its strong advocacy to maintain adequate funding for 3K and ensure the number of seats meets demands in neighborhoods across the city, as I heard from several council members in questioning. Similarly, Promise NYC has become a critical program for young undocumented children and their families, and that funding should be baselined. And for early childhood professionals, we really do need to amend-- this was the previous administration, the de Blasio administration's broken promise-- and ensure true pay parity. We'll have more on that in the coming days. I urge the council to maintain funding for community schools, 155 critical programs for 40,000 high-need students all across the city to support funding for shelter-based education coordinators. We have so many schools now where you have a greater number of kids in shelter who are homeless. We cannot lose that critical program when the stimulus funds that are paying for it run out, and there are critical investments to be made in accessibility in our schools so that they can serve students and parents with disabilities. Finally, rather than evicting individuals and families from shelter just 30 or 60 days after days have arrived, the subject of legislation that you heard last week, we should invest in the legal services, case management, assistance to obtain work authorizations, and workforce development that enable these new New Yorkers to get on their feet and move out of shelter into meaningful self-sufficiency. We need to scale up, improve coordination and job placement, and better measure the impact of programs like the temporary protected status clinic and the asylum seeker application help center. Of course, if you're getting evicted from shelter after just 30 or 60 days, the likelihood you're going to succeed through those centers and programs is dramatically diminished. And I'll conclude with just a couple of comments on the capital budget, which I noticed were of significant comment back and forth during the budget director's testimony. The preliminary budget reduces the city's capital commitment plan by $5.9 billion for the plan period from fiscal year '24 to '28, and does not fully reflect the needs, as you discussed, for the school construction authority, borough-based jails, the portion of the BQE owned by the city, and other needs. But I want to just address a little here about the debt limit because the budget director said a couple of times, you know, that that was a reason why we can't put more money in affordable housing, or we can't meet the diversity of needs that we have. First, I will say that the remaining debt capacity as of fiscal year 2024 is not $10 billion, as I think I heard him say. It's $26.7 billion. That's the remaining capacity we have under the current debt limit. Now, it is projected to narrow in future years because more commitments will come into the plan for all of those needs. And what paces the debt limit is a kind of very convoluted estimate of the overall value of city property, and that has slowed as a result of the pandemic. So the gap is narrowing. However, the governor Hochul has put a $12 billion increase in the city's debt limit in her executive budget. And assuming that that is adopted, and we believe that it is reasonable and appropriate to do so, neither OMB nor the comptroller's office project that the city would hit its debt limit, even including all of the Rikers expenses, the additional money from the SCA plan, and the BQE in the budget, anytime in the next decade. So we believe that the governor's proposal for the $12 billion increase in the debt limit is needed, but the debt limit is not a reason that the city can't invest an additional billion or $2 billion in affordable housing or meet reasonable capital expenditures. Now, we should strengthen the provision to make sure we stay below 15% debt service against tax revenues in our budget every year. That number currently is at about 10%. So we have, you know, meaningful room between the 10% we're currently spending on debt service and that 15% limit that it's critical to stay below. We'll be offering some suggestions about how we can do better to strengthen our policies to make sure we stay below 15%, but we can do that consistent with the spending that's been discussed in the capital plan, with the $12 billion increase that Governor Hochul has proposed in the executive budget. I wish I believed that the city could actually achieve the capital commitments that we're talking about. Every year, we wind up spending less than we project. That has gotten a little better in recent years, and I want to give DDC and OMB credit for improving those procedures. But I don't believe we will be able to hit every dollar that we're projecting to spend. And even if we did, as long as we get the $12 billion increase proposed by Governor Hochul, neither OMB nor the comptroller's office project breaching the debt limit anytime in the next decade. That means there is room to do things like put some additional capital into affordable housing, which I really believe, as I said at the beginning, should be our number-one priority. It's making it impossible for families to live here, and it impacts business growth in a significant way. In my mind, it is the most significant limit on the city's economic growth going forward. So I urge the council to fight for much larger investments in permanently affordable, community-controlled rental housing, like the Neighborhood Pillars program that helps save affordable housing and put it in nonprofit ownership, expanded limited-equity cooperative homeownership program, 21st Century Vision of the Mitchell Lama program. We'll have more to say about this in coming days. But in addition to the action we need in Albany, in addition to the ability to build a lot more housing and protect tenants, investments in genuinely affordable housing is one of the biggest things that the city can do to confront our affordability crisis. I will note that to convert those dollars, if we make them, into real projects-- HPD does need additional resources to clear its backlog, develop and train new staff, and expand the housing footprint. And we've offered some ideas for how it can do that in a recent report, Building Blocks of Change. To conclude, our short-term decisions must not short-change the city's future. Sound management and strategic investments are required to face the city's fiscal challenges, confront the affordability crisis, and ensure strong economic growth in the years ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to talk about some of the emergency procurement for asylum seeker response, the costs related to that. Back in November, your office released a report on emergency contracting, sent a notice to city agencies revoking the prior approval for asylum seeker response efforts that it had previously issued. As a result, agencies are now required to obtain independent prior approval on a case-by-case basis. And recently, the administration entered into a one-year, no-bid, $53 million contract with Mocify. Did HPD seek approval from your office before entering into this contract?
Yes, they did. They sought it in November.
Okay. And what was the type of review conducted before the approval was given?
So we reviewed the basis for the emergency procurement. Why is it needed? We reviewed, once they brought us the contractor that was proposed, whether they met the procedural requisites. And on December 26th, we authorized the use of the emergency procurement method via signed, written determination. And then, they brought the contract back to us, and it was filed with our office on January 18th, 2024.
Okay. I want to talk about some of the pension investment strategies. The investment landscape has obviously changed recently with elevated interest rates and high inflation. How are fund managers adjusting their pension investment strategies during this time?
So I'm pleased to say this was an area where something that we did together really puts us in a stronger position because, you're right, these are, you know, constantly evolving times. Interest rates are high. As a result, our fixed-income portfolio is facing a series of challenges. But one thing that we did in Albany back in 2022 was got state legislation changed to increase what's called the basket clause. Before that, the city was required to have 75% of the pension fund portfolio in either public equities in the stock market or in fixed income, in debt instruments. And it could only have a quarter, 20%, in what are called private markets, in private equity, infrastructure, real estate, private credit. And those turn out to be asset classes that, in an environment like this, give you opportunity to secure some additional returns. We went to Albany and got legislation to raise that from 25% to as much as 35%. We then underwent this past summer what's called strategic asset allocation, where you look at how to put your assets across those various asset classes, and used a little bit of that. We didn't go all the way up to 35%, but we bent from 25% to 30%, increasing our exposure in private equity, private credit, infrastructure, and real estate, which our investment managers believe will be good investments to have during a time like this.
And how are this year's pension investments returns looking so far?
So we had a very good fiscal year last year. So, you know, two years ago, when the stock market had its big bump in fiscal year '22, obviously, that was a great year then. Fiscal year '21 was the great year. Fiscal year '22, things were down. Last year, fiscal year '23, we ended June 30th up 8%, which is better than our state-directed 7%, hurdle rate that we aim for every year. So at this point, from fiscal year to date, it's about 4.75% up. Obviously, we're hoping for a very strong last few months of the year, and we'll report regularly to the council and the public.
Okay. I have one other question about the city's bond ratings. So S&amp;P Global and Fitch recently reaffirmed New York City's general obligation bond ratings at AA. Is this rating affirmation expected to impact the city's debt service obligations?
It's good to have our debt service AA ratings reaffirmed, but it won't have too much impact, actually, on our debt service. Obviously, a lot of factors influence how much you're going to raise with any particular issue and what your debt service will be. And the rising interest rates in recent years have certainly been, you know, the biggest factor affecting our costs. So we're on projection to, you know, the deals we've had in the field have been well-received so far. Even in the rising interest rate environment, we've been able to find strategies that have produced savings for the city, and we project to be able to hit the targets that are outlined in the plan. But we don't see any significant shifts, and certainly, the rating stability is a good thing, but we don't see it leading to too much shift in the plan itself.
I got one last question about the preliminary mayor's management report. Do you believe there's a correlation between the headcount reductions and the decline in some of the PMMR indicators?
Yes. You know, we looked at a couple of agencies where we have concerns like that. You know, we put this report out just a couple of weeks ago, looking specifically at HPD. Now, we give the agency there some credit. They took very large reductions during the pandemic, as people left. And then, they were able to do pretty significant hiring back up. Now, they face new challenges because they had lost a lot of people that had been there for years, and so they've got a whole set of training needs. They have a whole new set of technology needs. But that's a place where you're seeing a bunch of barriers that really need to be addressed. And the one that struck out to me most was the wait time to move people into a unit, even after that unit is ready. I don't have that stat right to hand, but it had been at about three months, and then it ballooned to six months, and I think eight or nine months for units for homeless families. And that's just processing time. That's, you know, if you're missing a few staff in that key unit, or you had, you know, you lost some people with real experience, and now you've got families who are waiting for that apartment desperately, and we're making them take a couple of months longer. So we did see some agencies that, I think, are having effective creative strategies. You know, I identify Department of Sanitation here that has found some creative ways to kind of manage its headcount and keep moving forward. But we did identify a number of places that we think the PMMR shows the impact of the hiring freeze.
Did you see improvements with HRA SNAP benefits processing? As the OMB pointed to, a whole bunch of hiring they've done, and, you know, clearing up backlog. Are you seeing that as well?
Well, I don't have-- I don't-- we didn't-- we don't have-- we didn't include HRA as one of the agencies we put specifically in our dig-in on the PMMR, but I'm glad to go back and ask the team.
Thank you. Okay. We have questions from council members Brooke Powers, followed by Brewer.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask a quick question. You wrote in a report last year that police overtime remains by far the largest overtime category and the most likely to far outstrip its budget. Yet there have been-- yet there have not been serious efforts either to rein in this spending or to more honestly reflect expectations in the budget. Can you talk about what steps OMB could and should take to be more appropriately budgeting for overtime among uniform offices?
So the thing we looked at in that report that really struck out to me the most was how much overtime there was on planned events. Obviously, one understands overtime for an unplanned event, something, you know, there's a-- for an unplanned event, something, you know, there's a protest or a disaster, then of course, you're going to assign people overtime. But a pretty substantial number of planned events, of parades and large-scale events that are known in advance, involved a significant amount of overtime. And that seemed to me to be one area where you could just say, "Look, we know this event is coming. We're going to staff it with folks who are on duty at that shift so that we don't have to pay overtime costs." So, that would be one particular place that we would recommend.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer, followed by Wrestler.
Thank you. So, on the contracts that the chair was asking about, the one that is for the cards for those who need to eat and get baby products. I understand that, I think one of the reasons that you signed off, which makes sense, is that they're backed by Citibank and other banks who have lots of experience with credit cards. So, that makes sense. But my question is, under what circumstance can an emergency contract be allocated in the first place? This may be a good one in terms of background. But it seems to me like every time I turn around, we have another emergency contract. Is it just health and hospitals? Can everybody else do it? What's going on?
Yeah. It's a great question. And I'll point to, in addition to the report we put out last week specifically on these asylum seeker contracts, we did a whole report called Rethinking Emergency Procurement that digs in on a bunch of these questions. Actually, let me use an example, because we approved one today from the same agency, Department of Correction, that we had rejected one from last week. So, last week, Department of Correction brought us a contract for the digital services for tablets of detainees.
I'm aware of that contract.
And that contract, we rejected because we concluded it should have been bid out, that they didn't have a good reason not to bid it out. Today, DOC came to us for exterminator services, because they had a facility at which a rat had bit someone last week. And they identified the need to procure emergency services. It seemed entirely reasonable. In that case, they had gone to three firms to get essentially informal bids. They didn't go through a whole RFP process, but they got three quick bids, and they brought the best of them to us. And we turned around that request for emergency procurement in an hour, I think, or a couple, you know, within the day. So, the charter gives some clarity on what are unforeseen circumstances, and when bidding or one of the other traditional procurement methods would be infeasible. But even when they are infeasible, you're still directed to use as much cost containment as you can, to make sure that the firm you're bidding with is appropriate. In the case of Mokafi, you know, what they brought was, and this has been publicly reported, you know, "We're looking for ways of keeping food costs down, of improving the..." And, you know, we think trying that out in a pilot round of the program
Pilot, 500 families.
Will, you know, is worth doing without bidding it out. And my team looked at the reasons given. In that case, we actually have city policies for P cards for, and they affirmed that those policies were being followed and gave prior approval.
Again, I think it means longer discussion, like you said, emergency contracts. Second, just quickly, the mental health beds, which you mentioned, are you going to do a study of that? First, we heard, you know, we're going to have 350 in Woodhall, Bellevue, et cetera. Then, we heard fewer number. And there's all different numbers, and nothing's happening. I think there's like, I don't know, 30 or something at Bellevue, if that, maybe seven. What's the story with that? You know, it seems to me, on so many levels, it makes sense. Reduction, support for mental health, et cetera, et cetera. Good healthcare.
Yes. These are the outposted beds for folks who are at Rikers but have a health issue, which might be physical health or mental health, and need to be in a hospital. And so, they're operated by Correctional Health Services. And yeah, so, there were three places that they were supposed to be.
Correct.
Only Bellevue is currently moving forward.
Right.
The other two are on hold. We've also asked the administration why not begin building them, and not gotten a clear answer on when those two are proceeding to construct.
So, you're getting the same answers. Okay. Thank you.
We've been joined by Councilmember Hanks on Zoom, and we now have questions from Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Williams.
Thank you so much, Chair Brennan. And Controller Lander, it's great to see you. Thank you for your thoughtful testimony today. Just a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. You noted that with the anticipated increase in the debt capacity as a result of Governor Hochul's plan, that there is no concern at this time about being able to accommodate the costs of the SEA Capital Plan and the Borough-based Jail Plan, as well as the BQE, even if I might think the latter is misinformed. Do you think that the mayor's cuts of $5.88 billion in the current capital plan were appropriate? In particular, I just want to highlight that disproportionately, those cuts came out of the de-cas budget, and really undermine our decarbonization efforts, and are a real concern for me. But of course, as are the affordable housing and other reductions that we're concerned about. Do you think that those cuts should be reversed based on your analysis of our debt capacity?
So, first, I will give the administration credit for reaching out to try to get the debt limit issue addressed, because I think if they hadn't sounded the alarm bell, gone to the governor, then she wouldn't have put the $12 billion increase into her budget. And we might have a problem in fiscal year '28, '29, '30. And because these projects take a long time, and you're borrowing, it's a good idea to keep looking down the road. So, I think it was wise to say, "We need to look at this issue and get it addressed," to go to the governor and get her to put the $12 billion in the budget. Once she did, and before she did that, I could see the reason for kind of the alarm bells and perhaps cuts. Once you knew and you saw on the executive budget that the governor was putting the $12 billion there, that you don't foresee a breach in the next 10 years, then I think it was a mistake to cut projects that you know are necessary, slow them down because of a problem that you are unlikely to have.
That's very helpful. Thank you for clarifying that. And I hope that we'll be successful in pushing back on OMB over the course of the budget process. And then, secondly, I just wanted to ask, and forgive me if you haven't had a chance to review what the council put out yesterday in terms of kind of our updated financial forecasting. But my understanding is that the council anticipated that we believe there's actually an additional $3 billion or so in revenue over this fiscal year and next fiscal year to support our needs. And your findings were almost in reverse, that you found approximately a $3 billion gap for next year, slightly small surplus for this year. Could you just help us, if you can, understand the differences in your projections versus the council's projections and what we're looking at?
Fortunately, I asked this question of the team last week.
Last night.
So, I think they... Lincoln's time is up, but Francesco's time.
There we go. Ready for Francesco. Thank you.
I'll be brief.
It's good to see you, Francesco.
Hi. How are you? So, a couple of things. We also have additional tax revenues relative to OMB, not to the extent that council finance economists have estimated or IBO has estimated. And I think our view there is that we have seen not as very strong growth in high-paying jobs in the city, and a lot of growth in low-paying jobs, as a matter of fact, and not a very evident return to the pre-pandemic trend, when we were actually adding 80,000 jobs a year. So, both of the council finance and IBO's forecasts are predicated on returning to that pre-pandemic trend. And that's not entirely clear to us, given that the high-paying jobs, finance and tech have headwinds. So, that's one reason why we have a different outlook. The other one is that, you know, in order to have jobs and residents, the city is a very unaffordable place, right? So, that sort of like gives a constraint over the longer term, right? So, that's the reason for the outlook being more moderate. So, you know, our tax revenues are consistent with that economic view. On the spending side, I think we are accounting for, you know, a lot of the costs, are accounting for the under-budgeting that takes place, the costs that we know will be incurred, but they're not in the budget, like, you know, the reduction of rental assistance from $800,000, something, $150 million to, you know, to a small fraction of that, right? So, adding all those up, we come up with those gaps in 2025. So, it's not a matter just of the tax revenue, it's a matter of the under-budgeting as well.
That's very helpful. You know, I just echo an element of the controller's testimony. You know, I think we are failing New Yorkers by our disinvestment in CUNY and community colleges. And if we want to shift and better connect New Yorkers to better-paying jobs that allow them to sustain and support a family, then cutting 16% of the operating expenses that the city gives to CUNY over the course of Mayor Adams' tenure is the wrong way to do it, and has the opposite effect. So, thank you for the clarification, and look forward to continuing the conversation.
Councilmember Williams, followed by Stevens.
We're over here corroborating. Quick question about the claims and settlements. You mentioned better managing spending on claims and settlements. Are there specific strategies that you would suggest? Very fascinated by how much money the city spends, especially around like NYPD lawsuits and et cetera. And so, just wondering if you have any strategies on how we could do better there?
We did a deep dive on crash claims. We're actually going to be looking at NYPD settlements in more detail going forward. But we did a deep dive on crash claims, because those two areas are actually the biggest, most years. And we offered a lot of ideas for what the city could do to reduce the amount of, it pays out every year as a result of crashes caused by city vehicles. NYPD is the largest, but there's meaningful amounts in sanitation parks and FDNY as well. And we made a whole series of suggestions, as I mentioned. If you just put those on the agency's budgets themselves, and now the commissioner would be like, "I would like to reduce crashes so that I could instead spend money on things that I want to have in my budget rather than on crash payouts." If you held city drivers accountable using something like the Reckless Driver Accountability Act, if those drivers of city vehicles are running through speed cameras or red light cameras, then maybe they shouldn't continue to be driving city vehicles. And for routine vehicles, you could consider things like speed delimeters. Obviously, you're not going to do that for a fire, you know, a fire truck or a police car in a chase. But if you had other city vehicles with speed delimeters, you would significantly reduce the amount of crash payouts that we saw.
And I know, like, your office isn't litigating this. It's the law department, but you have to sign it. So, is there, has there been any time where you've sort of negotiated or played a role with the law department's settlements? Because they settle a lot of things. They don't even go to court a lot of the time.
So, we actually are responsible for pre-litigation settlements in the controller's office. So, the controller's office is authorized to offer a pre-litigation settlement up to basically a year after the incident. And we do that in cases where things are really clear. Obviously, if there's conflicting facts or multiple parties, it'll generally go to litigation. But, you know, your car is parked, and a sanitation truck comes along and smashes into it, and you've got video, you can come to us and seek a settlement, and then we can offer you a settlement without having to go to litigation, saving the city money and saving the claimant money. And about half of city claims are settled by our office. Those are smaller dollars, so it's nowhere near half the total value. And we think we save a lot of money every year that way. And then, yes, after things do get litigated, they come back to us for review, and my office signs off on those settlements as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Good afternoon. Just a couple of things, and I think one of them is already highlighted around even when we're talking about identifying some concerning costs with alternative to incarceration plan. I've definitely been talking to providers, and it's been talking about, they've been, you know, just expressing their concern, how there has been a lack of recommendations, referrals, and all those things are kind of down. And also, just kind of connecting it to the closed Rikers Island plan, whereas that was also a decarceration plan, right? And I think sometimes we forget to mention that piece. And so, if we're cutting things like alternatives to incarceration programs, the census and records are going to continue to rise and increase. So, I do think that we have to start thinking about this in more circular, because I feel like we often talk about it in pieces. I just wanted to get your take on that perspective as well, just really quickly, and then I have another question.
I completely agree. I mean, I think these things go together. As you say, you'll hear the administration say, "We're working hard on achieving those goals." But then, how could you be cutting the ATI programs that are the essential way that you could responsibly have people who are not at Rikers, who are in a program with proven success? Recidivism rates as a result of ATI programs are significantly lower. They save the city money overall, and they're essential to achieving the close Rikers goals, but they're cut in this budget.
Yeah. And it's just one of the things that's very alarming to me around that and talking to providers. And then, just the next thing, is just thinking about the housing crisis that we're in, and just having concerns. And I know you have a number of ideas around some of it. And, you know, the Mitchell Lama thing is one of the things that I really am excited about and to work with your office on, just because that's something I think we need to be thinking about when we're thinking about housing and not just, you know, one model. But what additional resources do you believe, both capital as well as staffing, do you think we need as far as HPD and stuff like that for housing?
Yeah. And this is really, I wish I thought there was a silver bullet on the housing crisis. I think we need many different things. So, we do need more production across a wide range of income levels. And that's why I think both what's being discussed in Albany and that we haven't had the full chance to review them. The city of, yes, proposals are needed, but we want to make sure as much as possible of that is genuinely and deeply affordable to working New York families. And often, that takes city subsidy. That's why the capital dollars are so critical, and why I spent so much time on the debt limit question. We can't produce significant amounts of affordable housing across all neighborhoods that are genuinely affordable to working-class, low-income, and moderate-income New Yorkers without city subsidies. We've got some great programs, but we need some new ones. And I really, you know, when we think about limited equity, affordable limited equity cooperatives, a modern-day version, they're not going to look like the towers of Co-op City, but there's so much room for multifamily...
But those things worked, and they were effective, right? When you think about, I have one in my district, Conkers Village, that is effective, and it works. And it was a way for middle-class families to have beautiful places to live and own.
And when you think about the debate we're having about the need for more density, imagine being able to say to your neighbors, "You know what's going to happen as a result of this increase in density? Your kids and your neighbors are going to be able to buy a place they could not possibly buy otherwise." I think it would shift people's openness to the growth and development of new multifamily housing, if they believed a significant chunk of that was going to create affordable homeownership opportunities for New Yorkers who don't have them.
Yeah, 100% agree. I think that, and it creates roots and have longevity in communities, which we're kind of missing in some of our communities. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thanks to all the members. Great to see you.
Okay. Next up, we're going to hear from IBO. Okay, next up, we're going to hear from IBO. Good afternoon, IBO. The inimitable Mike Toomey is going to swear you in, and we can begin.
Raise your right hands, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, hold the truth, and nothing about the truth, and respond honestly to council member questions? Louisa Chafee, Sarita Subramanian, Sarah Parker. Thanks, please begin.
I don't think your mic's on.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and members of the Finance Committee. I'm Louisa Chafee, Director of the New York City Independent Budget Office. I'm here today with my colleagues Sarah Parker and Sarita Subramanian, IBO's Senior Research and Strategy Officers. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss the preliminary budget with you today. Recently, IBO has published three reports on this budget: an analysis of the preliminary budget, IBO's details on the economic and revenue forecasts, and an in-depth examination of the program to eliminate the gaps, the pegs. We're here today to report on highlights. First, the fiscal outlook. IBO forecasts a $6.0 billion surplus in the current year, which is $2.8 billion higher than the administration's expected surplus of $3.1 billion. This higher surplus results from IBO's forecast of $900 million more in city tax revenues and $1.9 billion less in city-funded spending than the administration anticipates. IBO estimates that next fiscal year, 2025, will end with a surplus of $3.3 billion. This is driven by using the 2024 surplus to prepay some of next year's expenses and an additional $2.0 billion in anticipated tax revenues, but it's offset by $1.5 billion in additional spending over the administration's projections. Recognizing that the city continues to face financial challenges, IBO's analysis concludes that the city's budget gaps from 2026 through 2028 are within the range that the city has closed in the past. IBO's economic forecasts predict moderate but slowing growth for the local economy. The Federal Reserve's actions to raise interest rates, the easing of supply-side bottlenecks, and productivity gains have helped reduce inflationary pressures. It's increasingly clear in recent months that the economy has reached a position where the question is not whether growth will continue, but how great that growth will be. Over 77,000 jobs were added in New York City in 2023, almost exactly in keeping with IBO's projections over the past year. While the numbers, while the job numbers for New York City are back to pre-pandemic levels, the city still lags behind the national economy. IBO estimates that the city will add around 90,000 jobs in 2024 before gradually moderating in the future years as the post-pandemic recovery fades. IBO estimates that the city tax revenue will grow by an annual average of 3.1%, growing from $73.8 billion in 2024 to $85.3 billion in 2028. IBO anticipates higher tax receipts than the administration in every year of the financial plan. Real property tax, as the single largest tax revenue for the city, is expected to help drive this growth. Now, let's turn to expenditures. IBO's reestimates of lower spending include reductions in the following areas: $1.6 billion less on city workforce salaries and fringe due to staffing vacancies, $2.4 billion less on asylum seekers across 2024 and '25, and $91 million less in tuition savings from charter, from lower charter school enrollment through 2026 through 2027. These reductions are partly offset by additions elsewhere. The preliminary budget included a second round of peg reductions totaling $934 million for 2024 and $1.8 billion for 2025. Despite these pegs, the overall city budget increased from $100 to $116 billion in 2024 due to restorations and other increases. Many of the human service areas that sustained cuts in both peg plans will greatly impact the nonprofit community-based organizations that are under contract to provide programs to the city. These include the Department of Education's Early Childhood Programs, Programs for Justice-Involved Individuals, and Older Adult Centers. Early childhood programs face especially notable cuts, potentially straining many New York families relying on these publicly funded services. These cuts are compounding longstanding challenges felt by nonprofits under contract with the city: late registration, late payment, inequity in pay scales, and potential fiscal cuts due to the end of the COVID era fiscal supports. Despite schools receiving full, fair student funding, the Department of Education faces a significant budget shortfall due to the end of the $7 billion in federal education COVID-related funds. The community schools peg, though fully restored for 2024, also leaves future years underfunded. This could mean fewer resources for staffs and students and reduced contracts for community-based organizations which provide these wraparound services. The November Plan's 5% cut to the city library system resulted in the decision to halt services on Sunday, shut libraries, and this reduction remains unchanged in the preliminary budget. Even as the city council and the administration negotiate, these cuts are occurring now in real time and are already impacting communities. The administration anticipates costs of $4.2 billion in asylum seekers this year compared with the IBO's estimate of $3.6 billion, a notable expense by either estimate, but it's still manageable within the context of the overall city budget of $116 billion, especially when a portion of these funds, be that 4.2 or 3.6, are expected to be reimbursed by the state if claims are properly submitted. IBO wants to emphasize to the council how much the city workforce has shrunk, decreasing from over 300,000 active employees to two, close to 285 active employees, 285,000 active employees since 2020. Hiring freezes and slow hiring practices have left the city struggling to recruit, retain, and replace agency staffing. This change in staffing has led to operational challenges across numerous critical areas, as experienced by New Yorkers day-to-day and supported by data as seen in the mayor's management report and extensively discussed today. While the city must continue to navigate financial uncertainties, IBO's findings indicate that with sound fiscal management and careful prioritization, New York City can achieve a balanced budget without fundamentally comprising city services. We're here to answer any questions and provide further details as needed. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. IBO has done their own analysis of the cost of the asylum seeker response. What challenges has IBO found in tracking the costs related to asylum seekers? And what does IBO see as a potential solution for greater transparency?
Thank you for that question. We see challenges almost identical to those just outlined by the controller. It's very hard to see the procurement details. Emergency procurements are used, often with agencies that do not transmit or where the data is hard to understand. It's hard to understand which providers are being selected, what services are being provided, who's receiving those services. As asylum seekers enter and exit the system, it's hard to understand the criteria. It's basically a very opaque system.
And what assumptions is IBO making in terms of census growth, new entrants and exits?
Yes. So, IBO updated the estimate in December, so following the November Plan, as well as the administration's announcement to reduce costs by 20%. So, our cost estimates, we had three different cost estimates that had varying assumptions in terms of the population as well as the per diem costs. Our middle scenario is what we factored into our gap estimates. And so, that scenario assumes a decline in the adult population based on the data we were able to obtain at that time. We did not yet have data on the census for families with children with enough time after exit requirements were instituted. So, that's something that we plan to look at for the executive budget. The other per diem estimate differed from the administration's. So, in December, we estimated a per diem of 320 per household per day, and that was based on a stated goal that the administration had publicly stated. And is roughly, was roughly about 20% less than the per diem that was most recently reported in October.
386, right.
Right, exactly.
What is your analysis of the asylum peg that was included in the prelim plan?
So, I will say that we are still trying to really understand what is driving the decline in cost. Definitely trying to track, for example, how the administration has come to the different assumptions regarding the per diem costs that they are reflecting. In total, the update is closer in line with what IBO has projected. So, back in November, the difference between IBO's estimate and the administration's was about $4 billion, and that has reduced down to $2.4 billion. And we also acknowledge the additional state revenue that has been reflected in the plan. So, ultimately, a decline in the city contribution towards asylum seeker costs.
Hey, talking about the pegs, what are your primary takeaways from the most recent peg?
So, as Louisa mentioned in our testimony, we track different categorizations of pegs. And so, looking at, for example, the restorations, while there were some pegs that were either fully or partially restored, there were also additional adjustments to the budget so that the net impact for 2024 is actually about 7% increase in the 2024 budget. Despite that, we do also note key areas where programs were, received a peg in both the November and the preliminary budget. In particular, we note the Department of Education Early Childhood Programs, Programs for Alternatives to Incarceration, as well as, I'm trying to think, what else? I think those are the, oh, and also adult, adult center, older adult centers. And these are, as Louisa mentioned, areas that nonprofit providers contract with the city to provide these services. So, you know, we're really trying to get a better understanding of what the impact could mean, both in terms of delivery of those services, but also payments to contracted providers.
Okay. And just a question about commercial real estate. What is IBO's, what is IBO estimating for the future of commercial real estate in New York?
Good question. Something people have been asking us lots of questions on. So, one of the things, just to lead off, IBO, in our, in our economic and in our tax revenue forecast, we are not anticipating a collapse in the real estate sector, in Manhattan, commercial office real estate in particular. Vacancy remains, vacancy rates do remain elevated, but we have yet to see asking rents materially decline to date. To be clear, the growth in the value of office space has notably slowed compared to where we were pre-pandemic, and this is reflected in our forecast. IBO is estimating about a 2% annual growth rate in the value of Manhattan office buildings. And this, while it is growth, is much lower than where we were, around 6%, more than 6% growth annually pre-pandemic.
Okay. I'm going to turn over to my colleagues, Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Wrestler. Okay. We have Councilmember Wrestler, followed by Brewer.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Chafee and team. Appreciate you joining us today. I wanted to ask about early childhood education cuts. The Budget Director testified again today that every child in New York City who wants a 3K seat can get one. I'd like him to come and tell that to the families in my district who have been shut out of the system. But just wondering if you could offer, if you could share, have you conducted any analysis of the longstanding argument that the Adams administration has been making that we have too many 3K seats and that the system has just been, that we have put seats in the wrong places and that we are in fact fulfilling demand? Is, do you believe that that to be an accurate argument?
That is something that we are also interested in getting a better understanding of. So, we have requested data at the site level from the Department of Education.
So have I.
Yeah. And a lot, it's taken quite some time. So, that is something that we are actively pursuing with them. We've thought about, once we can look at not just the total number of seats, but also the type of seats, because what we've heard is that there is greater demand for extended day-year seats.
But we looked at the data from last year, and we've requested it again for this current school year. The data they provided us last year showed that the, the seats were fulfilled at a lower percentage for the extended day, extended year seats, which is shocking, right? Because any family that you could find would tell you that they are desperately in search of extended day, extended year seats so that they can hold down a job and they're, have their kid taken care of, which to me only comes back, which to me comes back to the unfortunate reality that they eliminated the outreach program for early childhood education and that that is part of the challenge that we're facing, that they're no longer trying to engage anybody to encourage anyone to apply. I guess relatedly, the demographic trends, migration trends that we've been looking at have shown that disproportionately the people leaving New York City are low-income families with young children. And just wondering if, you know, I believe the black population in New York City has shrunk by 10% over the last, during the 21st century, you know, after only having gone up since the great migration up from the South. And so, what are we, are you, have you conducted any analysis of your own to understand how the lack of early childhood education options is impacting decisions of families to leave, impacts on the New York City economy? Any more you could elaborate for us there?
So, we haven't, we are in the process of looking far more in-depth at the early childhood 3K and UPK arenas, and we're very interested in usage. We're also very interested in the procurement issues because we're aware of the intense stress on the provider community with just operational delays from DOE. We're also really concerned about the entry to the system. In other words, as a family, how do you learn about how to get what you're eligible for and how to enter? It's not necessarily as user-friendly as one might expect of the Department of Education. We have looked at migration, outmigration through the COVID era throughout the Department of Education, but would be happy to speak with you more, focused much more on the early years, as we are also very concerned about what the data tells us about the future of New York City, that city government provides to city children. And we're also concerned about the general pace and accuracy of data that, you know, we are charter mandated to receive.
Absolutely. Well, if there are any ways we can be helpful, your analysis on this topic is of great interest to me and I think my colleagues. You know, the billion dollars in cuts that the mayor made to early childhood education last year were devastating, and he's decided to double down and make another 170-odd million dollars of cuts this current fiscal year. It is unconscionable to me why he would be so insistent on decimating early childhood education in New York City, and we have to fight back. And more data analysis and insight from you and your team will be immensely helpful in that effort. Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much, and thank you for a very clear, well-organized testimony. I appreciate it. My question is just on the employee. 77,000, I think, last year new and maybe 90,000 this year. That was well said. But in other testimonies that we've heard, it's, there are many jobs, maybe this listing, $55,000 and less, and there are very few jobs on the higher. And of course, it's such an expensive city, et cetera. So, I'm just wondering if you're looking at that, because it looks good, 77, 90,000, but not at less than 55,000. So, I'm just wondering where you think that leads us and obviously what we can do to have higher-paid jobs or less rent or something.
Thank you for that question. So, certainly, when we, we look at jobs, we are talking about jobs added over the course of the year, but then there is this question of what kinds of jobs is the city adding? of the year, but then there is this question of what kinds of jobs is the city adding? And generally, people talk about these in terms of sectors, and then in relation to that, the average wage of these sectors. So low-paying jobs are always something that we are looking at and concerned about as, as people who care deeply about the economic health of this city. It is important to point out that many sectors, both high and low wage, are still below pre-pandemic levels. So New York City, on the whole, we are just about to the number of jobs that we had in February of 2020 before things came crashing down. But nationally, the rest of the country is three percent above that. So New York City is still in this recovery phase, we are still lagging. One of the places that we are adding new jobs is low-wage home health aides. And this is a trend that was happening many years even before the pandemic. Other wage, other low-wage sectors, though, retail and then the leisure and hospitality sectors, they're also still struggling. So we have both low-wage jobs that we're, we're adding a lot of new jobs in, but also we have low-paying jobs that are still in these very much struggling sectors. And this is in contrast, a place that we have added jobs since the pandemic, pre-pandemic levels, is the finance and insurance sector and the professional, scientific, and technical sectors. On the one hand, this provides a cushion for our personal tax revenues, so our, our concern in looking at this is less that the city is going to see a hollowing out of our personal income tax revenue. But one of the things with low-paying jobs, there's a concern, again, to the local economy and also individual household ability to afford to live in this city. Thank you.
Okay, IBO, thank you so much, we appreciate all that you do and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna hear from the Department of Finance. Okay, we will now hear from the New York City Department of Finance and Committee Counsel Mike Toomey will swear you in before you begin your testimony.
Afternoon, please raise your hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Commissioner Niblak?
I do.
I do.
Assistant Commissioner Snyder?
I do.
Thank you, you may begin.
Ready? All right. Good afternoon, Chair Brown and members of the Finance Committee, of which there were more when I first got here. My name is Preston Niblak, and I'm the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Finance. I'm joined by Deirdre Snyder, Assistant Commissioner for Financial Management today. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on our fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget. Few city agencies have the reach and impact of the Department of Finance. We collect over forty-seven billion dollars annually in taxes and other revenues, which amounts to forty percent of the city budget. And most importantly, we interact with millions of New Yorkers every year. As I've testified in the past, I see my role as continually improving our customer service by evaluating our existing operations, leveraging new technologies, and giving our incredible staff the tools they need to serve the public to the best of their ability. We may not be everyone's favorite agency to interact with, but we do promise to always strive to make paying your taxes and other charges as straightforward and painless as possible. Much of what I'll have to say today will be focused on our efforts to better serve our customers, and I'll update you on what we have done, what we plan to do to continue improving our service to the public. But first, I'll give you a brief review of this year's tentative assessment role released in January, as well as an overview of our proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. As you know, DOF is required to determine market and assessed values for all properties in the city each year and issue a tentative property tax assessment role by January fifteenth. The tentative assessment role for fiscal year 2025 showed a small increase in market value of just zero point seven percent over last year to one point four nine one trillion dollars. Assessed values, which tax rates are applied, rose by four point two percent to two hundred and ninety-nine billion dollars, reflecting the continued phase in a prior year of market value growth. As I said, when we released the role, this overall very modest growth in market value subsumes a range of different recovery patterns in the various segments of the city's real estate market. Encouragingly, a resurgence in construction and renovation spending after three years of decline generated almost fourteen billion dollars in new market value, more than offsetting an overall decline of nearly six billion dollars in changes in value attributable to market forces. The decline in value due to market forces was driven by Class One, which saw an overall decrease in market value of three point four percent. This primarily reflects the rise in interest rates, which helped slow sales activity, which fell off by nearly thirty percent between calendar years 2022 and 23. Class Two market values rose five point three percent on the tentative role. For rental apartment buildings, recovery in terms of both lower vacancy rates and higher rents were partially offset by rising expenses. This is another area where we saw robust investment, with physical changes counting for seventy-one percent of overall market, market value growth. The office building picture is more mixed, with strong demand for modern, high-quality space, but continued weakness in less sought-after segments of the office market. Standalone retail stores and hotels continued to recover from the dramatic hits they took at the peak of the pandemic. Next, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the department's proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. Our preliminary budget for 2025 is three hundred and forty point two million dollars. That includes one hundred and eighty-two point seven million dollars in personal services funds to support an authorized headcount of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two full-time staff, and one hundred and fifty-seven point five million for other than personal services. Like all city agencies, the past few years have presented DOF with challenges from staffing perspective. When I was appointed Commissioner two years ago, one of our pressing challenges was recovering from pandemic-era attrition, particularly retirements. Progress has been slow but steady. I'm pleased to report that we filled one hundred and sixty-eight vacancies in fiscal year 2023, the highest in any year since fiscal year 2020. For the first half of fiscal year 24, the agencies filled one hundred and one vacancies, and we're currently working towards filling critical vacancies, including city tax auditors, deputy city sheriffs, and principal administrative associates. We still have a ways to go before we are at full strength, but we are very pleased with how far we have come, with support from the mayor and this council. Department of Finance staff come to work each day, ready to contribute to a culture of professionalism and excellence. They believe, as I do, that our customers deserve to be treated with respect and courtesy. We're proud of our many achievements in the area of customer service over the past year. First, we are setting records in the number of in-person outreach events, with a hundred and seventy events thus far in fiscal year 2024. We will hold over fifty in-person Notice of Property Value information sessions this season, our most ever. In addition to being present in neighborhoods throughout New York, we have also opened our doors to make it easier for New Yorkers to come to us by offering extended hours at our business centers to assist with exemption applications and questions as we approach the March fifteenth application deadline. And we are renewing in-person engagement with the tax practitioner community, including the first Tax Representatives and Practitioners Program known as Tax Wrap since the pandemic last October. In addition to our in-person outreach, we've conducted several email and mail campaigns directed to households that may be eligible for but did not claim various tax credits, such as the senior and disabled homeowner exemptions, the earned income tax credit, the child tax credit, and the child independent care credit. But there's perhaps no better indication of our commitment to customers than the redesign of the Department of Finance website developed in partnership with OTI Digital Services, who I really have to commend for their excellent work with us. And my thanks to CTO Matt Fraser. DOF's website is one of the most highly-trafficked municipal websites in the country, serving approximately eight hundred thousand visitors, who generate two point five million hits each month. Now we hope that it is also one of the best. The new website, launched in January, reflects our commitment to making it easier and more convenient for the public to get the information they need and conduct, conduct their business with the Department of Finance. The feedback so far has been very positive, with users giving us high marks for ease of use and navigability, and not just on our desktop version, but also on the mobile phone compatible version. Over the course of the coming year, we'll continue to improve the website in response to user feedback and through our own ongoing content review. We've not only improved the usability of our website, but added new tools that will make it easier for customers to access information and services. First, I encourage councilmembers and staff to visit the new and improved property information portal, which connects property owners to all the DOF resources they need, including their NOPV, property tax account, ACRES, and the new 3D digital tax map through a single convenient point of entry. Second, our self-serve parking judgment payment plans continue to help customers pay what they owe and avoid being booted or towed. Since February 2023, some seventy thousand customers have enrolled in payment plans online and made down payments of eighteen million dollars towards violations totaling ninety-two million dollars. Third, since October, rent freeze program participants have been able to renew their benefits online rather than returning a paper application, so we can now accept both initial and renewal applications online. And starting today, actually starting Friday, I'm excited to announce, we've also made it possible for your constituents to easily look up the status of their benefit applications online, which is one of the most common inquiries we receive. New Yorkers who have applied for property tax exemptions can visit NYC.gov/exemptionstatus to check the status of their applications. And we are continuing to serve as leaders and partners in the effort to close down illegal smoke shops to ensure that legally licensed businesses have the chance to operate in a fair marketplace. To date, the Sheriff's Office Joint Compliance Task Force has completed inspections at almost eighteen hundred unique addresses, seized twenty-nine million dollars in illegal products. We've mailed over four hundred notices to landlords of illegal shops, warning of possible penalties. We will continue to be unflagging in our efforts and appreciate both the council and the state legislature's support in strengthening the legal tools we have to close down illegal shops. In the coming fiscal year, we look forward to delivering a number of new improvements to benefit our customers. As we continue to modernize our collection system, customers will find it easier than ever to pay their parking and camera violations and environmental control board debt, including with an auto debit option. We are also working to introduce voice bot technology to streamline calls to our collections divisions and provide better, faster customer service. This year, we will introduce parking hearings by video, so that customers can present their case directly to a judge from the comfort of home, the office, the coffee shop, or anywhere else. With the addition of video hearings, customers will have a full range of options for disputing tickets, which can already be done via the web, by mail, in person, or through our Pay or Dispute mobile app. Finally, we are eager to work with the council to pass meaningful reforms to property tax enforcement, enabling us to collect property taxes from those who won't pay, while helping those who can't pay protect their homes and assets. We're grateful for the council's input in guiding our proposal thus far, and look forward to continuing this dialogue. In summary, we remain committed to providing the best customer service in all of city government. We're grateful to the many, for the many DOF initiatives you have supported in the past, and know that we can continue to count on your support in the future. Our door is always open to assist you with any needs that you or constituents might have. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I want to talk about the final assessment role. So is there anything happening this year that would, that lead you to believe that the change in assessments between the tentative and final role will differ from the typical one to one and a half percent reductions?
No, I think, you know, we, I don't see anything unusual. We typically, you know, but it's a combination of changes by notice that we do internally or tax commission actions, either on the value or on exemption status. But I think we are expecting a slight decrease in, in market value in line with what we usually see.
There's obviously been a lot of discussion about Manhattan commercial office vacancies. Are you seeing this flight to quality in the real property tax income and expense data that DOF collects?
Yeah, it's, it's clearly a mixed picture right now in the office market, very bifurcated, strong demand for high-end office space with, you know, modern layouts, technology, amenities, and less, less so for older buildings with fewer amenities. Two things to keep in mind regarding the tentative assessment role, first, it's based on reported income and expenditure from essentially two years ago, calendar year 2022. And second, assessments for the purchase of property taxation are retrospective, while valuations in the market for purchases or financing of buildings are forward-looking and are, you know, projecting what is expected to be future income and expense rather than past income and expense. So I think the fact that the office sector is relatively flat overall in the tentative assessment role compared to before the pandemic reflects both the mixed state of the market and the fact that in 2022, employees were still working from home, but employers were still paying the rents on their leases, which had yet to run out and expire. Another factor that contributed to the increase in market values this year was a big upturn in investment. There was, actually accounted for in the office building sector, forty-two percent of the increase in market value from last year. The rest was mostly equalization changes. The rest was mostly equalization changes or, you know, changes in market conditions reflected in real property income and expense statements.
High mortgage rates obviously have slowed existing home sales across the country. New York City is obviously not immune. Has DOF seen home sales of higher-end residential properties slow the way that more the mainstream homes have slowed?
During the pandemic, there was, you know, a big, surprising, I think to everyone, kind of surge in the market. It's clearly fallen off very much. Market value decreased for Class 1 this year by 3.4%. That was driven by a big drop-off or accompanied by a big drop-off in sales activity. As I said, one to three family homes between calendar years 22 and 23, transactions fell by 30, 25%. So obviously driven, no doubt, by higher interest rates. So as we see interest rates decrease or stabilize and the kind of the buyers become accustomed to the market, I expect we won't continue to see that kind of fall off, but for a while at least, I don't expect another big uptick.
Recently, HPD put out its findings from the 2023 Housing Vacancy Survey. Obviously, the headline was about the city's vacancy rate falling to, the city's rental stock fell to 1.4%. I know as part of your assessment, you collect information on rental buildings with 11 or more units. So is there any insight that DOF might have into these vacancy rates?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly have seen vacancy rates start to fall again quite dramatically this year. And it's a slightly different measurement, so it's not quite, it's not the same numbers as what we saw from the HVS, not quite the same time period, but definitely, definitely a sharp downward decline in vacancy rates. And that's also been, you know, driving the increase in rents that we've seen that supported incomes, even though expenses have been rising, incomes have been rising fairly substantially too. Particularly in the unregulated sector of the market, we saw some pretty hefty increases in values this year. You know, ultimately, that low vacancy rate reflects the mismatch between supply and demand that the mayor is, you know, proposing to address through his City of Yes plan to help increase the supply of housing and ease those historically low vacancy rates.
Is there a profile for types of locations or types of buildings that have lower or higher vacancy rates?
We can get you some information about that. There is, and we recently, this year, for example, we, we used to look at buildings in categories that were pre-74 and post-74. We've now added a 74 to 2000 and a 2000 forward because there's, you know, as more modern buildings have come online, we've seen a difference in how they, we should assess them. So now we've started to reflect that. So we can certainly get you some information that looks at that.
Okay. A question about SCRI and DRI. According to the mayor's preliminary management report, the increase in processing time for SCRI and DRI applications is due to decreased staffing levels. So what, can you tell us, what is the current budgeted actual headcount for DOF employees that are assigned to the SCRI and DRI applications?
Let me ask Assistant Commissioner Snyder to address that one.
So currently, for specifically SCRI and DRI, our current active headcount is 27 in the unit. We also have another nine vacancies we're trying to fill.
And is that about standard in the 30s?
I think that with, you know, prior year vacancy reductions and things, we have vacancies to fill, which will help with application processing timelines, but we're also, as an agency, clearly dealing with, you know, less staff from before. So really, the focus is to just fill the existing vacancies that we have. We have a hiring pool this month for-
Hiring hall?
Yeah, hiring hall, excuse me, for principal administrative associates. A big chunk of those are for exemptions division.
And do you think, obviously, you'd always love to have more staff, but do you think 30-something people is enough to handle all SCRI and DRI applicants?
I think so. We, you know, as we talked about last year, I think, we had a kind of artificial backlog because we held open cases, renewal and initial application cases during the pandemic for longer than we normally would. It turned out to be almost three years. So that, we've now closed that caseload. Our cycle times right now, as of February, are under five days for everything. In fact, four days or less for everything, pretty much. So we are currently, and this is heading into, you know, the peak season, the applications are, final applications are finally due March 15. So we're, I think we're doing very well right now. And we've made a number of process changes and, you know, additions of automation where we can to help make the process more efficient.
Could you tell us how many New Yorkers are currently eligible for SCRI and DRI?
Well, our, no, but our estimate is about 135,000.
And what's the, what's the ballpark participation rate?
It's around 55%.
Is that where it normally hovers?
You know, it's, so this is where I'm going to draw on my great many years in city government. I mean, I certainly remember, you know, 20 years ago was in the 30s. So I think the continued push that everybody has made has helped drive the participation rate up. We do a tremendous amount. At DOF, we work a lot with the mayor's public engagement unit, with DIFTA, with others, to make people aware of the availability of these benefits. As I said, we've done a record number of outreach events this year. We've, we've done mailings to make people aware of the availability of benefits. We do a lot of, we make a lot of effort, and, you know, we hope that people will hear us and sign up. The other thing that most significant, I think, from last year was the legislation that simplified the definition that we use for income for eligibility. So that, that has really made a difference. First of all, we think that, you know, upwards of 50,000 additional households could be eligible for SCRI or DRI under that legislation. The other goal of it was to simplify the application process by having a simpler income definition, and we have seen the number of applications that have gaps in the income information fall off quite a bit because we have this simpler definition now. So, you know, it makes it, it makes it easier for people to apply. We sent letters recently to people who may have been turned down for Shahi or Dhaji in the past, but who we think might be eligible based on the new income definition to encourage people to apply.
Question about auditors. And the council talks a lot about trying to prioritize the revenue generating titles, especially now that the hiring freeze has been loosened a bit. Do you have a formula for the amount of revenue that each additional order would generate for the city?
We have a, yes. We have a sort of by type of tax, and we have a, you know, estimate of what people bring in on average each year, so that's kind of what we use to generate an estimate of the revenue.
And what will be the titles that are included in this peg for the November plan?
Right, so we got 39 city tax auditors. We also got some funding to help, you know, with promotions within the city tax auditors to work on retention, which is very important. In addition to the 39 auditors, we have three clerical associates, two conciliations attorneys, and one collections specialist. Conciliations is where you go if you don't agree with us, and we can't reach a resolution, then we can go to conciliations. And if that doesn't work, you know, you could end up in collections.
Okay. Question about the marijuana shops and the sheriffs. What do we need to do to give the city the power they need to close these shops down once and for all?
First of all, I really want to acknowledge the work of Sheriff Miranda and his team. They're out there every day in the front lines, trying to address this problem. They are working kind of with one hand behind their backs right now because they don't, we don't have the legal authority at the city level that we need, as has been noted by a number of people. The resources to do this are located here, but the legal authority is located at the state. So we're very happy that, you know, we're having conversations right now with the governor's office and the legislature. We appreciate your support on the council for changes to the state law that will give us more authority and allow us to, you know, go from just inspections to actually be able to close down padlock shops that are operating illegally and take other, more stringent enforcement measures against them.
Could you have a number of how many illegal marijuana shops have been raided for FY23?
Yeah, nearly 18, I mean, since, since the Joint Compliance Task Force started, about 1,800.
But we don't have an idea of how many of those actually stayed closed, right?
I don't know how many stayed closed. We did, we have sent letters to landlords. We sent 435, if I remember correctly, letters to landlords, warning them of the possibility of penalties.
Has that been successful?
It has been. We've gotten a number, you know, we've heard back from, I think, over 90, so over 20% of them so far. Most of them are either have begun eviction proceedings or have actually, a few of them have actually gotten through to the end and evicted their, their clients, or their tenants, rather. So it's definitely, I think, been a success.
Okay. I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, starting with Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Just a couple of quick questions, I think, and hope. Judges in New York City can order electronic monitoring in place of bail for pretrial detainees on Rikers Island. Since 87% of the jail population are people incarcerated as a result of pending criminal cases, the ability of judges to utilize ankle monitors has the potential to decrease the jail population significantly. The sheriff's office budgeted, budgets for the purchase of ankle monitors and also administers the program. Can you describe the role of the sheriff's office in administering electronic monitoring for the court system? It's our understanding that they're both screening defendants to determine whether they're suitable to receive an ankle monitor and also monitoring compliance with the terms set for these devices. Do you know if that's accurate?
That's correct. We, we, we get information on the, and the basic things we're looking at is, is there electricity, do they have a stable housing? Is there electricity at the stable housing so they can charge their ankle bracelet? And is there an adult contact person who can be reached? If those simple criteria are satisfied, we advise the judge, and then it's up to the judge to make a placement. When we get placements, and we have about 285 active placements right now, then we monitor 24/7 the status. And if somebody, you know, ankle bracelet goes out, we give them, we start by giving them a call. Occasionally, someone will, you know, cut their bracelet essentially and, or, and leave the city or the state. We've pursued a couple of people who've left and brought them back. So, you know, we're actively monitoring people who are in the program.
Thank you. Is there a backlog of cases waiting to be screened for electronic monitoring devices? And if so, how many people are currently in the screening pipeline? What are the common reasons people are deemed unsuitable for electronic monitoring? And how often is homelessness the reason people are rejected for electronic monitoring?
Rejection, there is no backlog right now. We, we keep up pretty well. I mean, there are people who are sort of in the process, but I wouldn't say there's a backlog at all. We don't reject very many. The vast majority are approved, and again, because it's a fairly simple, straightforward set of criteria that has to be met, that are pretty easy to meet. So I don't, yeah, I don't think that, I'm sorry, I forgot the middle part of your question.
Just the common reasons people are deemed unsuitable for electronic monitoring?
You know, it's, it's so infrequent, it's, if we really cannot pin down somebody's address and don't think they have stable housing, we will usually report that back to the judge.
So it's safe to say then that homelessness might be a reason that people are rejected for electronic monitoring?
I mean, we would take somebody who was in a shelter, who was, you know, could be, could be, who might be living in a shelter. But if they couldn't, if they were living on the street and didn't have any fixed address that they could provide to us, that we could verify, then, yeah, we might go back to the judge and say, we can't monitor this person.
Okay. How many staff in the sheriff's office are assigned to either screen defendants or monitor compliance with electronic monitoring devices? And do you have enough staff to fulfill these functions?
There are 24 deputy sheriffs currently assigned or budgeted for this, this task. We've been talking to OMB actively, you know, and so I'm sure you're aware, there's discussion about expanding the use of electronic, pretrial electronic monitoring. So we've been talking with OMB about what resources we would need in order to expand it.
Okay. And just one last question. How does the sheriff's office procure electronic monitoring devices? How many total devices are in your inventory? And of that total, how many are already assigned to defendants? And how many are currently available if judges opted for electronic monitoring instead of setting bail?
I will have to come back to you with that information. I don't have that handy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Brewer.
Thank you. Just two brief questions, two or three brief questions. A lot of my colleagues, including myself, have some serious concerns about the increases in processing times for SCRI and DRI applicants. Just wanting to get perspective in terms of what is causing the lag in these processing times, how the Department of Finance seeks to address this internally, and how does this budget help ensure the Department of Finance has what it needs to address this pressing issue?
I appreciate the question, and I think we, you know, we are doing much better than what was reflected in the preliminary mayor's management report, which obviously only covers through October. As I mentioned earlier, we had a kind of a case backlog where we held cases open. That really drove up the average time for processing kind of artificially. Now, as of February, we are at four days or less to respond to both initial and renewal applications. So, you know, I think we are, as Assistant Commissioner Snyder said, you know, we are actively hiring to fill vacancies in the, in the property exemptions administration unit, and we are also looking at some automation in there. I think the change in the income definition has been very helpful in that we have to, we don't have to go back as often to people to request that they give us additional information about their income. So that's actually helped, I think, a lot speed things up recently.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to Rita Jen for all that she does. We appreciate it very much. When you talk about the sheriff, I want to thank him also because I have been out and I see the amazing amount of work that goes into a raid and calculations and bags of stuff and time, et cetera. So my question, though, is, I believe, looking at some of the online data in the open data platform, that it's like only 10% of what is submitted to OTH that actually gets collected. So I'm just wondering if you have some ideas about what gets collected? The second question is along those lines. As you know, thanks to IBO, I did a report over a year ago that we're missing out as a city, not just finance, on 2.1 billion in terms of collection. That's a lot of money. So it's uncollectible. I've been around long enough to listen to all that, and I can't believe that 2.1 billion is uncollectible. And then third, I know that this lien sale is hanging out there. I just was wondering if there ever is a lien sale, because I have buildings that are in Manhattan, sitting there, not paying their taxes. I can't do a thing about them. So I'm just wondering what that would contribute to our revenue if there ever was. So those are my three questions.
Okay. So with respect to fines that are issued during the course of Sheriff's Joint Compliance Task Force, those are almost entirely issued by the Department of Consumer and Worker Most of them are probably returnable to OTH. I know that some of them are not docketable, which means that they'd ever come to us for collection.
So when that, when I go out with the sheriff and he marks down, I'm making this up, I'm learning these terms, the flower is, I don't know, $200, the blah, 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 and they add it all up. That doesn't go to OTH? What, what happens to the fine?
I don't know. This is really a question for DCWP about what exactly goes and how much they collect. I really can't answer that question.
I thought it went through. Okay.
Because, you know, the stuff that comes to us is only after it's defaulted at OTH or someone hasn't paid, so, for collection. On the, on the broader question, I mean, I think, I'm, first of all, I'm going to say yes, some of it is uncollectible. A couple of things. First of all, we have a collections division led by Assistant Commissioner Pam Parker-Tijo, who does a fantastic job. who does a fantastic job. The general process is, with respect to ECB debt, for example, if it's, if a respondent defaults, doesn't show up for their hearing, or comes to their hearing, the violation is upheld and they are found guilty and they don't pay, that comes to the Department of Finance for collection. We work that debt internally typically for a couple of months. We have what's called the Account Executive Unit, who just, it's, it's, they send dunning notices, they make phone calls. If they are unsuccessful after 60 days, if it's a high value amount, and the, the average fine that comes to us is about $500. So if it's a higher than, if it's a higher dollar amount, may be referred to our Legal Affairs Division, the collections unit there, for them to do a legal proceeding like an execution or a levy on a bank account. For smaller dollar amounts, it goes to three successive collection agencies, each of whom works it for six months. You know, I mean, obviously, if somebody collects it the first round, then it doesn't go on, but...
And they get paid something for their administrative...
They get paid a percentage, yes. And, but that's...
They don't, they don't get paid if the person doesn't pay, or do they...
Right. It's only, it's strictly on what they collect.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the rates are very according to the type and the, and whether, where they are in the queue, are they first, second, or third? So I think that that's, you know, this is best practice from an industry point of view, and I think that we do well on collections. Parking violations are kind of self-resolving for the most part. Usually, we have a 90% resolution rate within the first three years after a violation.
Yeah, parking's easier, because they don't want to lose your car, yeah.
Yep. You know, property taxes, as obviously you mentioned, is a, is a different story, right there. The only tool that we really have to enforce has been the lien sale. And we're looking at a delinquency rate that's now up at like 3.4%. That's up 4 tenths of a percent compared to last year, which may not sound like a lot, but that's almost $150 million. We are, at the current rate, we are looking at delinquent property taxes at the end of this fiscal year of over $800 million. Historically, we've been under $350 million at the end of the fiscal year, when we had regular lien sales. Last year, it went up to 700 million. This year, you know, it looks like it will go north of 800 million. So it's the, it's not just the absolute dollar amount that I think should worry us all, but it's also the trend in people sort of recognizing that there are no consequences for not paying your property taxes, and that, that just can't be allowed to continue. We really have to address it.
I got three buildings, and they each owe a million, so that's $3 million right there. Just finally, in terms of, like, if someone doesn't pay sanitation, et cetera, that still goes to you in terms of the collection? Is that what you're saying? Or whatever, building department, et cetera, et cetera?
Anything that's returnable to ECB and which can be docketed, meaning that can be, you know, filed as a, as a claim in court, will come to us for collection.
Okay. And do you break that down, like, which agency does well, doesn't do well, et cetera?
We, we have a report that we do each year in, at the end of October, on outstanding ECB debt, which, you know, I'm guessing is probably something that you initiated. But I would recommend that. It's very, very comprehensive.
Okay. Thank you.
Does DOF prioritize, now that the hiring freeze has been loosened again, has, is DOF going to prioritize hiring assessors?
Our priority right now is in three areas, in the short term. City tax auditors. We, there was an old civil service list that we kind of exhausted. We've been hiring provisionally. In the meantime, we've had, I think, 26 offers that we've given and another 14 who are people who are in the queue for interviews. Next week, we're holding a hiring hall for city tax officer auditors off the new civil service list. Deputy sheriffs, we are working on, that's a lengthy process. They have to first pass a physical agility test, then a medical evaluation, a psych evaluation, and then a background investigation. So that's a lengthy process, but we've started the physical agility test. We called 2,000 people so far, or 2,600 people, I guess, now, I think, and so far, we've had 240, I think, roughly, people have passed the physical agility test. So, you know, we're our, we have 32 vacancies right now, deputy sheriffs, so I think, I expect we'll be able to fill those. And then the principal administrative associates, we have 22 vacancies to fill, which we are also going to do later this month through a hiring hall. They're critical kind of across the board in our operations. As Dee Snyder mentioned, they're, you know, a big part of exemptions and a lot of other places as well.
And if members want to do hiring halls, you'll work with them?
Sure. I mean, it's a DCAST-run thing, but, you know, we're, we're happy to work with anybody to help with our hiring.
Cool. Any more questions? Seeing none. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Forward to working with you going forward. All right, we'll take a break, and then we're going to hear from the public.
Good afternoon. We'll now begin the public portion of the testimony. A brief reminder, if you are testifying in person, please first complete a witness slip with the sergeant at arms at the back. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. For those testifying in person, please come to the witness table as your name is called and wait for your turn to speak. For those who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce you may begin before delivering your testimony. During your testimony, you must remain on topic and maintain decorum. It is not permitted to record yourself or the committee while giving your testimony. A full recording of the hearing will be available on the council website. First, we'll hear from Maria Polycarpo, Caroline Conroy, Anna Champenny, Haylene Olasko, Sarita Daftry, and Matthew Robinson. Hey, you may begin. I'll begin with you.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and members of the City Council. My name is Maria Polycarpo. I am president of DC 37, Local 1757, which represents appraisers and assessors. I work as an assessor in the New York City Tax Commission, and I'm going to speak regarding the critical need for the hiring of additional assessors as a crucial part of the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. At the Department of Finance, assessors are responsible for overseeing the valuation of approximately 1.1 million parcels within the five boroughs and the single largest source of revenue in New York City. Our overall member total is down over 25% since March of 2020. Staffing at DOF has been at crisis level and continues to decline. There are 15 vacant districts with Brooklyn suffering the most, having seven vacant districts, short supervisors, and a vacant senior supervising assessor position. Staten Island is now the only borough without a more experienced 3A assessor and also without a supervisor. The loss of revenue due to the lack of actual assessors valuing properties versus a flawed computer modeling system run by random titles is immeasurable. We have seen tax class 2 properties reduced by model nearly 30% without any rhyme or reason. Hotels, even those considered major property profiles, are being modeled. Cell towers and billboards need regulation and monitoring, along with an audit process for those who do not report the income they produce or claim of no income due to sale. Physicals for alterations, new buildings, flip sales, and condo conversions are being missed due to the shortage of staff. The sale of air rights is not monitored or accurately assessed. At the Tax Commission, assessors are tasked with an insurmountable caseload and mandated to 12 weeks of overtime. Human error due to the lack of time to carefully review caseloads is unfair and is unfair to the taxpayer and can be costly to the city. Excess annual leave is also a significant issue due to the nature of our demanding schedules. The hiring of an additional 100 assessors will help to fill the current vacancies and create smaller, more manageable districts. The uncollected revenue, which would be sustainable with additional assessment staff, could fund vital public services. We have been advocating for a line of succession and warning about attrition for years. Unfortunately, both retirements and resignations have outpaced any hiring efforts. Local 1757 thanks you for your time and consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We'll do all the testimony, then we'll come back for questions. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Conroy, and I'm the Senior Director for Policy and Programs at the New York Immigration Coalition, an umbrella policy and advocacy organization that works statewide with over 200 immigrant-serving member organizations. Thank you Speaker Adams, Chair Brennan, and the members of the City Council for convening this hearing. New York seems to be at a crossroads in how and who it chooses to prioritize when budgets are concerned. False narratives of budget scarcity and scapegoating of new arrivals have been used to justify unnecessary austerity measures that not only harm our most vulnerable communities, but all New Yorkers. Critical programs like childhood education, language, and housing accessibility and support cannot properly function without guaranteed consistent funding. Given this administration's misleading statements in relation to our city's financial health, aggressive cuts to critical services and programs, and unwillingness to publicly commit to funding restoration, despite increases in revenue, we call on the council to continue to support and allocate funding to the following priorities and programs in the upcoming City Council budget to protect the interest, safety, and quality of life for all New Yorkers. We must renew funding for critical outreach programs for immigrants, including Access Health Initiative and the Key to the City Initiative, which help connect thousands of immigrant New Yorkers to critical services, enshrine the restoration of funding to 3K and pre-K programs, which are the only free early childhood and education and care available to many immigrant families and are linked to higher academic outcomes, less engagement with the criminal justice system, and higher ultimate financial stability for children who go through these programs. Expand Promise NYC Childcare Voucher Program at at least 20 million to continue providing childcare to the youngest immigrant children who are not eligible for other forms of childcare vouchers. Fully invest in the New York Public Schools in CUNY, including protecting and expanding investments in the six English-language learner transfer schools outside of Manhattan that support newcomers and asylum seekers. And looking to, as of late February, over 55,000 30-day notices have been given out to single migrants, while over 9,000 60-day notices have been given to families. We must fight back against Mayor's 30- and 60-day shelter rule and adopt fiscally sensible policies, including addressing longstanding affordability and accessibility crises facing New York City and embrace comprehensive housing solutions by allocating adequate funding to the budget for city FEPs. Also, investing $5 million in the city's language access working cooperatives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and members of the City Council Finance Committee. I am Anna Champenny, Vice President for Research at the Citizens Budget Commission. Chronic underbudgeting and the more recent trend of funding recurring programs one year at a time, what we call the fiscal cliff, have grown to dangerous levels in recent years. These, along with the surge in costs to support migrants and asylum seekers, put the city's fiscal health at significant risk despite an expanding economy. Through its role in shaping the city's budget, the City Council will partly determine whether the city's fiscal foundation is stable and therefore whether the city will be able to serve New Yorkers well. We urge you to ensure that your proposals to add or modify spending are affordable and do not make the city budget even more fiscally precarious. For example, we mean that funding required to support current level of the city FEPs vouchers, whose costs are expected to exceed $800 million this year, but are budgeted at approximately $150 million next year, should be in the budget before adding or expanding other programs. Adding programs when the current ones are not fully funded yet expected to continue adds unsupportable weight to our fiscal house of cards. CBC's analysis found that the preliminary budget presented a balanced budget for fiscal years '24 and '25. However, proposed spending in fiscal year '25 is short by $3.6 billion needed to continue the current level of services. That is why we believe that it was ill-advised to cancel the April '24 program to eliminate the gap. Even if higher revenue projections prove accurate, which would be good news, the city may abruptly face funding shortfalls that require significant sudden spending cuts that can harm programs more than restraining spending to affordable levels over time. Prioritization based on data and efficiency and quality service delivery are hallmarks of the thoughtful, nuanced approach that is needed. Blunt instruments such as blanket hiring freezes and across-the-board targets may achieve savings, but too often come with unwarranted service reductions. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Hi. Greetings, Chair Brennan, Deputy Speaker Ayala, and esteemed members of the Committee of Finance. My name is Haylene Olasko, Director of Government Relations at the Center for Justice Innovation, and I am honored to testify before you all today. We thank the council for its sustained and steadfast support for programs that work daily to make a positive impact in the lives of people most impacted by the criminal legal system. And we are relieved to learn that this latest round of spending cuts have been canceled, but understand that there still continues to be financial constraints that will inform future decisions. Having said this, we urge the council to continue to support the progress already made in the effort to make our criminal legal system more fair, humane, and effective while keeping our community safer. It is important to make a conscious effort to not divest from vital services that will work to address a multitude of growing community needs as this will directly impact public safety. The center's program across the city expands the entire justice continuum, working to enhance public safety beyond enforcement by, one, increasing civic engagement in placekeeping and nature developments through our neighborhood safety initiatives; two, responding to and bringing awareness to the intersection of gun and domestic violence through our RISE project that works within the crisis management system; three, by supporting at-risk and systems-involved youth with economically sustained lives through our crisis management system programs such as SOS Save Our Streets in both the Bronx and Brooklyn, and its wraparound services such as the Anti-Gun Violence Youth Employment Program, school conflict mediation services, and therapeutic supports. Also, through our life-changing pre-arrangement and diversion work such as Bronx Hope that causes a harm reduction model to give clients the opportunity to rehabilitate and connect to community rather than jail or options that do not really address their underlying issues. And as we look forward to the closure of Rikers Island, our programs will be relied on more than ever, and the efficacy of these programs are reliant on meaningful investments to do so responsibly. In closing, well-funded, community-based programming produces better outcomes for individuals as well as our communities, and they generate cost savings. Our programs provide much-needed services. And in close, for your reference, you will find a map of our programs across the city in addition to letters of support from the Brooklyn, Bronx, Manhattan DAs with Staten Island forthcoming. Thank you so much for your time.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan, Deputy Speaker Ayala. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Sarita Daftry, and I'm co-director of Freedom Agenda. We're led by our members who have experienced incarceration themselves or through a loved one. We're one of the organizations leading the campaign to close Rikers, and I'm glad to testify here today, certainly along with this panel. The council heard the administration make several disingenuous arguments today about for excuses for extending the financial and humanitarian disaster that is Rikers Island. So as we move through the process of setting budget priorities to ensure the best use of our city's resources, I'm glad to be here today to emphasize that Rikers Island stands out as the worst possible use of our dollars. New York City spends 350% more per incarcerated person than at comparable jail systems in LA or Chicago, and yet people in DOC custody are subjected to some of the worst jail conditions in the nation. DOC's failures and inefficiencies are by now well-known. They are even more egregious when considering what DOC's vast resources could pay for instead. Incarcerating one person at Rikers Island for a year costs over half a million dollars, equivalent to providing supportive housing for 13 people or engaging between 25 and 70 people in alternatives to incarceration. The plan to close Rikers Island approved by this council in 2019 marks a commitment to take a different and much more effective approach to public safety. This also requires spending our money differently, but Mayor Adams has refused to align our city's budget with the legal and moral obligation to close Rikers Island by 2027. He is proposing serious cuts to alternatives to incarceration and reentry services and failing to adequately fund supportive housing and community-based mental health treatment. I'll skip a little bit down in my testimony. I hope you will read the piece about the experience of our members as a son who's been on Rikers for more than three years, costing him dearly and costing us financially. So I want to summarize, close by just saying that we are urging the council to intervene. We know the council has supported closing Rikers, and to make that real through this budget, we need to reduce DOC's uniform head count to about 5,100 officers by eliminating vacancies and holding staff accountable for chronic absenteeism. We need to reduce overtime expenses by permanently closing unused jails. We need to restore $27.8 million to the Office of Criminal Justice for alternatives to incarceration, supervised release, and reentry programs. Allocate an additional $21 million to meet critical housing and mental health needs. I'll note that that's about one month worth of DOC's overtime, so certainly we can afford it. And we need to increase the Board of Corrections head count in proportion to DOC's head count. The council has reaffirmed its commitment to closing Rikers, and that must be backed up by a budget that strengthens our communities to improve safety, reduce incarceration, and get Rikers closed. Thank you.
Thank you. How much does it cost to keep someone on Rikers for a year?
$556,000.
And how many people are on Rikers right now?
About 6,250.
And then I have a question for Maria. I don't know, did you hear any of the testimony from DOF and what he made of that?
Well, he danced around your question, your very direct question in regards to what's the plan for hiring assessors.
How many, in your tenure as president, what's been the highest count, head count, for assessors?
Just from March of 2020, I've analyzed the last several years since March of 2020. DOF had about 173 combo of assistants and assessors, and we're currently down to about 125 at DOF.
Okay.
And DOF being the largest agency with our members, of course, affects all the other agencies at the Tax Commission, DCAST, Law Department, and HPD because most people start out at DOF and then move their careers over to the other agencies. So without a hiring pool at DOF, it kind of makes a ripple effect towards the other agencies, which are also down, for instance, the Law Department is down 50% staffing at this point since 2020, March of 2020 to current. So all the agencies are suffering from a lack of hiring.
And do you find that, something that council raises quite a bit, do you find that as these hiring freezes come and go, when they're loosened, are they prioritizing hiring the revenue-generating titles?
We have made some efforts in hiring, but unfortunately, the retirements and people resigning for other agencies or other different job opportunities, it's outpacing any hiring efforts that we've made.
My colleagues have questions? Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you for your testimony and for DC 37. So how long does it take, say, for instance, you find somebody who's appropriate? How long does it take to get that person on board? Do you have some sense of that as a union president? First of all, your testimony was excellent. It must have been quite shocking, to be honest with you.
It was meant to be. So, for instance, we have an assistant city assessor list, which was established. I believe it's been about two years now and hasn't been called from. And, yeah, and a huge problem with that is it's an entry-level position. Typically, you need two years of experience as an assistant in order to become an assessor, and most people need to go through that process. So if we're waiting two years to hire from a list and then another two years of them gaining experience to be moved into the assessor title, it's definitely problematic. And also, another huge problem is that the training staff, because people are retiring at such a fast pace, we don't have many people left in the higher levels to do the training for the newcomers. So it is definitely at a point where it's a crisis right now. We have a big problem on our hands.
So would you make suggestions, you did a little bit in your testimony, about just overall what should be done? That's something that you-
We definitely need to hire from that list. We need at least, you know, we're calling for at least 100 people to be hired.
From that list?
From that list. We have, we're waiting for the assessor open competitive and promotional list to be established. It was given in September of '23, so hopefully that will be moved along shortly. We have some people who've just moved to, we have about, I think it was roughly 15 that were moved into the assessor provisionally. So hopefully, they can move that list and make them permanent. And we have about another 28 assistants at this point that can hopefully be moved into assessor positions.
They're lucky to have you as president. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline, do you think Albany is doing enough for the migrant crisis?
I think more resources are needed at the city and the state level, and definitely more can be done. There are supports that are needed outside of New York City as well, so I think that we can do more overall.
And Anna, do you think, do you agree with what OMB contends that the rainy day fund should only be used for a recession?
Our position has been that the rainy day fund should be used for recession or an extreme catastrophe or emergency with a significant revenue loss or expenditure impact. So we are not as narrowly defining it as they are. If what you're asking about is referring to the migrant crisis, I think at this point, we would sort of lean more towards the fact that we aren't at a sort of an emergency crisis that has just happened. We've been muddling through for quite a while, and we have recurring costs. So using the rainy day fund would give you a short-term reprieve, empty out the fund so you don't have it for something else, and still leave you with migrant and asylum seeker expenses down the line. So in this case, we would sort of advise against it.
Any questions? Do you think you're good? Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
And neglected to also thank Councilmember Brewer. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next here from Lisa Rivera, and then turn to witness testimony on Zoom, beginning with Sierra Kraft. You may begin when you're ready.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Brennan, Deputy Speaker Ayala, councilmembers and staff. Appreciate the opportunity to speak about legal services as it relates to the FY '25 preliminary budget. My name is Lisa Rivera, and I'm the president and CEO of the New York Legal Assistance Group, otherwise known as NILAG. NILAG staff are amongst many providers doing the essential work to support our communities, work that in many instances, as you all know, exists because there are systemic obstacles in all the institutions that our clients encounter to achieve justice. In 2023, we impacted the- In 2023, we impacted the lives of more than 130,000 individuals, the highest number in our 34-year history as an organization. That's an increase of over 15,000 that we served in the prior year. I share this because the numbers reflect an ever-increasing need amongst the communities we serve, especially in housing, access to benefits, shelter advocacy, and immigration. That's why today I'm asking for the city to increase the investment in critical civil and legal services and social services that are designed to help our clients because they are increasingly becoming difficult to access. We've heard the word crisis thrown around quite a bit lately, a migrant crisis being the most consistent mention. And suffice to say, nonprofit providers have a rich history of responding to a crisis. We've created innovative, expert-adaptable programming even during budget shortfalls to do even more with fewer resources, because it is our mission to meet the most basic needs of our clients so that they can thrive and live a life with dignity. That said, amid the increasing needs of those seeking our services, including our new neighbors, the fact is that we feel it's the utmost importance to properly define the crisis before us. It's not a crisis of people overwhelming systems, but a crisis of management divesting from the very services that exist to confront these systems, their inequities, their injustices, and thus their inefficiencies. The nonprofit sector has reached a tipping point. NILAG's continued ability to respond to the need and recruit staff, retain them, pay our advocates fair wages, is all at risk because of chronic underfunding. I've testified about this before, but a budget reflects values. Nonprofits stand ready to meet New Yorkers' needs, but instead of maximizing our connections to the communities and our expertise, the city has cut successful programs and left us uncertain about what type of programs we will have after reductions. We can only continue to do our work at the necessary volume, pace, and level of expertise with significantly increased investments in legal and social services that NILAG and organizations like us can provide. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
How much is NILAG currently owed by the city for services rendered?
As of last count, two and a half weeks ago, we had invoices outstanding somewhere around $6 million.
So you have about $6 million in outstanding invoices, and how long have you been carrying that?
We have been unable to invoice properly since December.
Okay. Gail?
The same question, in other words, has this been a problem in the past, or is this something that is newly created?
It's a little bit of both, but this is a newly created issue. And so, you know, you've heard the nonprofit sector speaking a lot about late contract registrations, onerous uploading of documents, and sort of repetitive measures. And we have full-time staff really to upload documents at this point at our organization. The city had moved to a new system, Passport, which many of us are familiar as providers, to sort of streamline efforts. And so while that is definitely appreciated, because we spend a lot of time trying to obtain the money for the services that we provide, it wasn't ready. The program, the system, was not ready. In December, it rolled over. We were asked not to upload any invoices into the system. It's not unusual for us not to be paid on time, so it was not alarming at that point. But three months later, without the inability to upload invoices at this point, is requiring agencies like mine to take out loans to make payroll. We are similarly situated across the board in terms of social and legal services across the city with this issue as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Now turn to Sierra Kraft on Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Brennan and the Finance Committee for inviting testimony. My name is Sierra Kraft, and I'm the Executive Director at iCare. We are a coalition of legal service organizations providing free representation to unaccompanied immigrant children facing deportation in New York City while advocating for universal access to counsel. Having access to an attorney can be a matter of life or death for immigrant children and families. Immigrants aren't granted the right to an attorney in immigration proceedings, not even if they are a child. Children are fleeing violence and trauma in their home country in search of safety, protection, and opportunities, and New York ranks fourth highest in the country for unaccompanied arrivals, with over 8,000 young New Yorkers arriving annually. And without representation, they stand just a mere 15% chance of winning their case, resulting in rapid deportation back to countries where their lives are at risk. With the support from City Council through the Unaccompanied Minors and Families Initiative, you've made it possible for the iCare Coalition to stand alongside over 12,000 young immigrants. Children represented by iCare attorneys have over a 90% success rate, providing them the opportunity to pursue higher education, meaningful careers, and leadership roles in a city they now call home. iCare attorneys are on the front lines every day, defending immigrant rights and upholding New York values. However, we have not received an increase in funding in over five years, while thousands of young immigrants await to receive legal support, vulnerable to detention if they cannot, deportation if they cannot find or afford an attorney. So today, we're urgently calling upon City Council to prioritize funding for the many unaccompanied minors that New York City, that are reliant on New York City's critical legal services. Our coalition of seven providers seeks $4.9 million this year to serve nearly 1,700 children and families to provide legal screenings, know-your-rights trainings, direct representation, and referrals to city and social services. Now more than ever, it is critical that we stand in solidarity with children seeking safety and protection in this city. We look forward to our continued partnership with you all to uphold our values as a sanctuary city. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Marianella Diaz, followed by Tanya Krupat. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and members of the New York City Council Committee on Finance. My name is Marianella Diaz, and I'm the Campaign and Policy Manager of the Human Services Council, a membership organization representing over 170 human service providers in New York City. HSC serves our membership as a coordinating body, advocate, and intermediary between the human services sector and government. We take on this work so that our members can focus on running their organizations and providing critical direct support to New Yorkers. These are the nonprofits that support our city's children, seniors, those experiencing homelessness, people with disabilities, individuals who are incarcerated or otherwise involved in the justice system, immigrants, and individuals coping with substance abuse and other mental health and behavioral challenges. We strive to help our members better serve their clients by addressing matters such as government procurement practices, disaster preparedness, and recovery, government funding, and public policies that impact the sector. Years of underfunding of the sector have resulted in the human services workforce being some of the lowest compensated workers in New York City's economy. These are the workers who do some of the most important jobs in our communities. They take care of our aging neighbors, assist families in staying in their homes, work with people to overcome substance abuse and addiction, and help people from all walks of life in the event of an emergency. Yet despite all of this, they are drastically underpaid. City agencies are not getting a deal by chronically underfunding human services contracts to balance their budget. It is further harming the low-wage workers the city relies on to keep these programs running while pushing community-rooted nonprofits into failure during a time of increased need. It is fundamental to invest a 5% COLA in this budget year and publicly commit to a 3% COLA in each of the next two years, bringing the full investment in human service workers to 16%. Thank you so much, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Tanya Krupat, followed by Sienna Fontaine. You may begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Tanya Krupat. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Advocacy at the Osborne Association. Osborne serves 10,000 participants in programs from arrests to reentry each year. Osborne has been a proud member of the ATI and Reentry Coalition since its inception, and we are among the 11 organizations included in this year's funding request. We are grateful for Council's support for the vital services we collectively provide. ATIs are effective and affordable. For the cost of one person being detained on Rikers for one year, a year in which they are likely to experience or witness violence, to be separated from their family, may lose their job and home, and their health and mental health may worsen, ATIs can serve more than 30 people, yielding positive and life-changing results that make us all safer. Osborne has submitted a number of funding requests to this Council, which are detailed in my written testimony, which include funding to relaunch programs for people detained on Rikers, while we also call for the full restoration of the $17 million that was eliminated at the end of this past June, as well as for the closure of Rikers. We're also requesting funding for our work with NYPD to safeguard children at the time of their parents' arrest. For the past three years, the Council has funded Osborne to lead this work. We're enormously grateful, but there is much that's left to be done, including working on the issue of executing warrants to reduce trauma to children. And NYPD Commissioner Kavon has submitted a letter of support for this request. To advance the goal of gun violence prevention, we're requesting $20,000 for our BOGAP, Bronx- Osborne Gun Accountability and Prevention Program, which serves 16- to 30-year-olds facing their first gun charge. BOGAP is very successful in keeping people, young people, out of jail and prison, saving millions of dollars, and achieving positive outcomes. We're also requesting funding for our soon-to-be-open Bolton Community Reentry Center, which will provide 140 transitional housing beds for older men returning from prison. We're grateful for the Council's steadfast support to reduce the impact of arrests and incarceration on the city and the trauma that this inflicts, particularly on Black and Brown communities. To close Rikers Island, we need an all-hands on-
Time has expired.
-to reducing the number of people there. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lastly, we will hear from Sienna Fontaine. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and the esteemed Finance Committee. My name's Sienna Fontaine. I'm the General Counsel and former Legal Director at Make the Road New York. Make the Road New York is a membership organization with almost 27,000 members, and we serve about 30,000 immigrant and working-class New Yorkers a year with our legal, health, and educational services. And our community centers provide a welcome space for those looking for support and connection in many aspects of their lives. We ask the Council to use every available tool to meet this critical moment in our city's history and reverse the mayor sweeping, shortsighted, proposed budget cuts to vital services that would have a lasting, damaging impact on the communities that we serve and their ability to thrive. Amid historic housing, shelter, cost-of-living crises, we need to invest in communities and not make the shortsighted cuts that hurt the most vulnerable among us. We've identified four important examples. First, the cuts that threaten legal services, especially immigration legal services, as we heard a little bit about earlier. For example, our Rapid Response Legal Collaborative, which fills a critical gap, helping individuals who are literally on the verge of deportation. The city's asylum navigation centers are sending increased referrals in recent months while proposed cuts to this program are on the table. These cuts would do irreversible harm to our communities who are looking to stay and to build with their communities. Second, education cuts of $1 billion over two years, coupled with the loss of federal funds for school, nurses, and more, will absolutely devastate our youth and their potential. This is unacceptable while the city continues overspending on school police and the NYPD's bloated budget. Third, we ask that the Council work with DYCD to baseline $21.7 million in the preliminary budget for fiscal year '25 and amend the new-
Time expired.
...literacy RFP, ensuring those funds are included in the RFP. And then lastly, cuts to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and Health and Hospitals threaten to help access services, which thousands rely on to meet their basic needs. We have a list of kind of individual requests that we'll detail in our written testimony, but again, want to reiterate that this is a time for critical investments, not major cuts. So thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, preliminary budget hearing number one is adjourned. Thank you.